All right, I'd like to call the July ninth meeting of the fire commission. Do order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Are there any moments of silence? I noticed that. South Street was had bunting on it, didn't it?
Yeah, we did. Thank you for bringing that up. This past month and the past couple of days, we've lost two former officers. Jimmy. Devin Dorff. Long time cancer passed away. Passed in a ladder truck. Passed down employee. Down low crew. Longtime member and then Nate Mann, former assistant chief. Just recently passed away from cancer. So those are the two that were on there.
So if we can just have a moment of silence, recognize their service and contributions. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start with. We'll start with tabling something. We cannot consider the minutes of last month's meeting for approval because we don't have a forum with people who were at that meeting. So we'll table that for next month. Moving into reports, my report. Nice work on the budgets, gentlemen. You came in, you made it. So that's great. You know, I think, you know, there were lines that were over and under, but in aggregate, we were, you guys were both in good shape in the black. So that's terrific. I did ask. Sebby to sort the numbers a little differently and I gotta do it. I gotta do it again to make it easier to understand, but basically was taking your ranking of. All the suppliers between both departments where we're spending the most money. And you probably know off the top of your head where it is, right? It's triple A, it's firematic, it's gallons and nights. Those are the big hitters, but we're spending. Eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year with triple A between the two departments and about the same with gallons a night. So. Big. Big numbers, but that sort of speaks to if we can get some of this stuff out the bid and maybe consolidate. Maybe we'll do all right. And I know there was, there was discussion of involving the purchasing department and I was unfortunately was not able to represent it last time when I was here and I haven't wanted to have those conversations. They're willing to use our, our supply that the suppliers are currently using, but they just want to throw a few others in the mix. So as long as we have a spec or something, they'll go get, they'll get a price on it. So I don't know that essentially going to change anything. But it's going to give the town an opportunity to do it transparently and, and get those bids. So.
One issue that I have with, with that whole thing inside of like, how are we expected to get three quotes of getting a fire truck serviced if we have to have. You know, some picture, we gotta drive it there. Are we gonna have to drive it to another location and then to a third location?
Let's just, let's see the prices, see what, see what the prices look like, you know?
Going to have to take all that into consideration.
Yeah, and certainly choices you make that are more, more expensive out of a matter of convenience for, for exactly what you're explaining, but at least we've, we've got it quoted. You know, if it comes down to be, you know, it's five thousand dollars a gallon tonight, but it's a thousand dollars somewhere else. Well. For four thousand dollars, we might want to drive a different direction.
I understand that but it's going to be tight considering for us to, to be good. There's not a lot of that, but also I could call. Couple of people over at GTA and they'll help us over the phone or you get somebody out there like.
Yeah.
But that's the thing is that we have this. Relationship with them where I can text them, hey, this is what's going on. Should we take it, you know?
Yeah, there's. Hundred percent understand there's, there's.
I, I think if we keep bouncing around, we're not going to have that relationship with.
Hundred percent understand that. I totally get that. And no one's making a choice to move anywhere else.
No, I'm just saying that's, that's the notion of keeping consideration when we.
But let's keep everybody honest, right? So, so you know.
I understand we're gonna.
Brad or Sam could call gallons and I'd say, hey, listen. We want to keep working with you, but you know, you're thirty percent higher. Can you do something about it? Maybe they meet us in the middle.
Breakdown, I got a breakdown from. The place where we bought there, what they, they actually give you like a virtual list of further services, you know, X, Y, and Z. You know, I, I can get them, you know, fairly easy for, we just had to find that third.
Yeah, and it's we, you really don't have to, right? It's, they're, they're willing to do it.
I understand that.
The idea is to make it easier for you, not harder.
I don't know if there's another vendor around, you know, that's in a reasonable timeframe to be driving them. Where I'm not going to drive a fire truck out to casinos, it'll cost you more money.
That's true. No, no, totally, totally understand that. And you know, there's an opportunity cost for, you know. Gallons and it's relatively close. Water town's not all that far, you know, the towns, the trucks not out of town that much. So totally understand that.
I'd just like to say something too, really. They said what Matt just said is I call the manufacturer. I'm really, you know, so I'll say to them, who is your vendor in the area? And I have to tell you 90% of the time we're going to say, who are you? I say Dan break that for this okay, triple A. And now we're locked in anyway, but that doesn't seem to make any difference. The price is still very, very good. In fact, a lot of vendors have called up afterwards, said, chief, how'd you make out? And I said, good. He said, hey, how much you pay for that? Whoa, we selling that cheap? So, you know, we're doing okay. So we're, we're kind of going in the back door and coming out the front over the decent price.
Yeah. Again, it's, it's all about transparency. That's it. That's all the board of finance wants to see is that, you know, there's. Some, some work being done to manage it and you're being very prudent. You're both being very prudent about it, right? Let's just, let's just verify that.
Yeah, I think here I got two quotes. One from Martin Pride, one from the globe. I didn't get a third one yet on gear, but it's all the numbers are. I think it's six hundred dollars difference instead of turnout here from Martin Pride to, to gold and like. Completely honest with you, I don't care what kind of turnout here we get as long as it serves. You know, it's a little bit cheaper than, than it is what it is. It had this, it's you're changing the game.
Yeah, and you know that, so gear is one of the things that's, you know, it's a big item and it comes up every year. And I think everyone's fine with the eight sets of gear, but I think. The board of finance has explicitly said. If we're getting eight plus eight, why aren't we getting sixteen? And they have to match for that, right? So if we can come up with a combined spec and get a price for sixteen sets of something. And then we can get a comparable quote for eight of your style, any of your style, then we say, hey, here's how it all lays out. There's, there's no price benefit on eight sets of gear because we're, that's nothing compared to. New York ordering hundreds of sets of gear and, and it will be okay.
And then, and that's what I did is I just basically mirrored, mirrored that full. You know, gear and I said, get us a price on that. And if they came out, I'll give you their quotes, they came out cheaper than, than the globe. Which I knew that was going to happen, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
We have to go with Martin Pride, we'll go with Martin Pride. You know.
Quality gear.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know.
I don't, I don't think. Three quotes to work on a piece of apparatus. That's a little tough because it's something that you have to take the choice. I think that three quotes would be gear, air packs, stuff you're buying.
Yeah.
Maintenance. He's like, you need brakes done? You can't be driving it three places.
No, no, and I, I wouldn't think we'd be driving it places, but there's the annual maintenance. So gallons a night, we spend eighty thousand dollars in gallons a night between the two departments. So if they're ten percent high, that's a lot of money.
But you don't know about it till it's over done with because you don't know what they're going to find in maintenance.
Well, I understand that, but there's also the annual inspections and stuff like that, which is probably stuff that comes off. That's not easily compare.
That's not.
I don't, I don't think the effort's not to make it hard and burdensome, right? It's just to. Just to get some transparency to make sure we're, we're doing the best we can.
And then, well, then also if they know you're looking, let me see your. Inspection, well, prices. Then get price.
That's right.
If they know you're looking, they might not come in this night.
Right. Yeah, just keeping everybody honest.
Do you want these here?
Sure. Thank you. Awesome.
I didn't mean to talk to you.
Yeah, we gotta figure out how we handle it. The paper trails. Awesome.
And that brings me to the next thing about gear.
Yeah.
While we're on the subject. I do have to order gear for this year and we do know that it takes a time to, to do it. So. With that being said, I'm probably going to order Martin Pride gear if that's okay to measure.
Is it, do you have, do you have three prices in here?
I have two, I don't want to.
They wanted three.
I, I have copies of that quote.
Do you have a third?
I have it with me tonight.
Oh, good.
But I, I have to apologize. Despite all the copies and stuff with me, we forgot to make copies of this. So can we make copies? All right, so. Yeah. And here's the quote and here are the specs.
Okay.
So in case there's five pages.
What kind of gear is it really?
It's, um, the stuff that we just took delivery.
Martin Pride?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same quote that I probably got from, um, which was. I'm talking, did you get a, did you get a third quote for a different?
No, and I, I, we talked about this a little bit last month is we were, we were waiting to see what was tariff stuff was going to go. I, I hope everybody realizes that all of shells are not made in the United States. The, uh. You know, when Nomex. Was first put together by the, uh, wait, not Gore.
Dupont.
Dupont. When their. Control of that. Was lost after twenty years. Within the next two years, there were thirty different. Types of Nomex on the market, all which were manufactured in Southeast Asia. But all the good stuff. That we use now on a turn up here to only Germany. I mean, they, they are known for their excellent. Fire resistant. All the proof resistant fabrics they make it and. These tariffs are going to hit. I said it to one of the vendors, what do you think? He said, I'm not giving you any prices to consume these tariffs though. And I had to respect that. So, um. But what we do have here is people who have stuff on stock that they can use. And then God knows where it's going to go in six months. So he can get it now, he's going to be in much better shape.
Aren't you ordering them at the same time to get the quantity discount?
Um, we just took delivery of eight sets. And he was, he had a couple other issues that, you know, he was working on financially, which now he's going to allow him to take advantage of after the first of July. So he's ordering his gear now, am I correct?
So then it's not going to be. Sixteen cents.
Well, it, it, it could be, but we're running a firefighter one class in the fall. And that's, we want to see who passes that before we commit to any big expenses on turnout here.
Like, oh, that affect the board of finance?
I don't know if it's going to affect the price of the year though.
That's what I think.
It's going to affect the price of the first of the year.
But you could also just take any one of these quotes and bump it up to sixteen and see if it changes anything. It probably won't. Right? And that's, then. Close rate.
So I only got a quote per one set a year.
Singles, a single.
Well, this, this quote is your chairman is, um. The total cost of the turnout here was just delivered. And the subsequent three pages that are attached are the specifications. So. Well, it's all right there. And to be honest with you, if you want to look at the, uh. The first page of the quote there from my sales order. At the top where it says LTO tail, tail outer shell, six point ounce per square yard combat flexed. That, that combat, combat flex. Outer shell was field tested by Chief Evanuska two years ago. And I said to Chief McAlvin back, I said, you know, that, that's. That fabric has an excellent reputation. I wish I had known when we'd ordered stuff two years ago, I would have loved to have gotten set like that. So a year ago. I did order a set for myself, it was my turn to get gear and we got the combat flex. We liked it so much that we changed our spec and bought it. And what it does is. It, it fits to everybody's buying size. If you're a little on a heavy side or a little on the skinny side. The fabric moves and it fits and it, it doesn't allow for the heat transfer into the gear because it layers uniformly across this whole body. So it works out a lot better as opposed to other shells, which are just like a regular, let's say a London five coat, it just hangs straight down. And, and the fabric moves as well. So you, you have a tight air pack on for a rescue belt, you still get the flexibility in the gear. That the other shells, the other outer shells don't operate. So we decided to go with that. Without good force.
The coats are a hundred bucks cheaper. In the same unit.
That's twenty six hundred per coat.
And, and the other thing you.
Around five year in the set.
I go back to when we were four hundred dollars.
As you can see though, we all. You know, included, they refer to that, but particularly with shield, wristlet, jingles, things like that. That's the cancer prevention stuff. What these, uh, these particular prices don't include. Is, uh, let me see here. Now this included the hood, the gloves. The boots. Coat. Pants. And I think. The helmets were separate one. And they were about four hundred dollars each. So gentlemen, everything but the, uh, the helmets are included in that book there.
And they were like, the helmets were like three ninety-five.
Doug, I'm missing something.
Missing prices?
Yeah.
The what?
Uh, for, for the stuff Doug handed out, there's no.
Money one.
There's no prices. One, there's high tech. Right? That's you.
Yeah.
When I said I had prices, I sent it to that.
That's for that. There's no price on that. Oh, okay. Thank you. Is internal harness the way you guys go?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the way to go. Without binding a gent tour then it's just.
I think there's a lot to digest here. To get us to where we need to be.
Cause I'm. I think it'd be great if everybody goes all the.
Yeah.
You know what we could do, Mr. Chairman is maybe next month we'll bring a set of gear on, put it on a table and take a look at that.
That's fair. I'm, I've seen. You want to see gear, Rich?
No.
No?
No.
I'll take a look. You know, might, might fit me good though. All right.
That's what I need to expect.
Why don't we, why don't we? Casey, if I could ask you to. Scan these into PDFs to send out for the next invite or before the next invite?
Right. I might actually already have it.
Even better.
Mr. Chairman, um, to continue on with the turnout here. You allow, um, one thing that we, we've gotten very aggressive about in the last four years. Is, uh, our gear repair. So we found a, I talked about this before, a company that comes out of LA and, uh. They're, they're very good and Chief Evanuska and I, like Doug, the last three years, we've been sharing the cost on that. So, uh. The care and maintenance of the existing gear is extremely important. And if we could. Care for it, maintain it, repair it, it goes a long ways towards not having to buy new gear. And the, the vendor that we use, again, going to different shows, they turned out to be the cheapest. They do helmets as well. The only thing really they don't do is boots, which is a whole different thing. So they will come up here last year. I don't know, Doug, what's the last one? We probably did twenty four sets of gear. We're talking about replacing zippers. Repairing pockets, replacing Velcro. Putting name tags on all the coats, changing the officers. Stickers on the back of the coats, repairing reflective tapes, putting new chin straps on helmets, repairing inside gums, et cetera. And I think the total bill came to just around five thousand dollars. We hit the jackpot and we did, between you and I, we bought twenty four sets of gear. And what it did was it just. We got to put that gear right back in the rack and the guys and the girls were using it. So.
It was a tune up.
That's a big part of this. So. We're on top of it, that's true.
Could use some money. That's good.
Right.
All right. Yeah, so that's, that was actually all stemming off of my report. I have no further comments. I mean, we actually covered some of the stuff that's, that's coming down below already. So. And the my report? Chief's reports?
Uh, yeah, we had, you know. Twenty five. Okay, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-five calls actually, which I've argued all the. Call types and, and all that apparatus response, which actually I keep forward just to. You guys ahead of time, there's a lot to tell them.
That's good.
And that's actually the most people that I'm burning.
Casey, do we have a Google Drive location? That we can store this stuff in? Like we do in Kanzing? Let's do that. That would be way easier than handing out a bunch of stuff.
Everybody can access it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I should be able to access it.
And if not, I'll work the chat on it.
Yeah.
Cool.
Well, we had a handful of members just pass EMT. So that's excellent. Very beneficial. We're trying to figure out how we're going to do a fire one class. I gotta discuss with my brother a little bit more to see if we're going to be strong. Because we, at Stony Hill, we've been getting. Unremarkable amount of people coming to join us. And I don't know what it is in the water up there, but. Believe me, it's good, you know, and yes, it's very good. But we need to start getting some, uh, classes I. You see the amount of, uh, steep classes that we've been, you know, in and have and. You know. Very good ones and we actually had a extrication the other day. And we had some issues with the stabilization. So immediately I, we hooked the. Class to have us, you know, go over the stabilization again and all that. Great. You know, just trying to see people moving forward with all the, you know, new guys ever get. Other than everything, and it's great. We had one issue the other night. Which I don't know. We had, we had a call that the one we called not, not breathing, not responsive. One of our individuals came into the firehouse. And misjudged the turn and went through the guardrail. My understanding is that the town picks up the deductible for the individual's insurance. I don't know if that comes out of my budget or if that comes out of something in the town. I think we have to figure that out. So we can take care of this and fix it.
Okay. Or did that make work, Rich?
No.
No.
I don't know.
Did you, are you just talking about an engine? Hit the guardrail?
Oh, one of our members.
And the FIS picks it up.
I don't need to do. I, I don't know. I've never dealt with it. Somebody had an accident, you know, so, so. It's in that.
You want to tell Esperanto? Yes.
If, you know, I'm, I have to come up here tomorrow anyways.
If you, if you wanted to do it, then that's.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention to.
Thank you. I, I think they would, but I don't know. You're on duty, so.
Yep.
Other than that, I have, I've been helping with all the apparatuses. Oh, we had one issue today. Uh, rescue two. They had it outside doing their truck check and wouldn't start when they were done. Come to find out, we found out the batteries were nine years old. So I went and purchased four new batteries for the truck and installed the four new batteries this afternoon. Which probably saved the town probably around four hundred dollars for not calling when you can't pick them up and go. So that's, uh, you know.
That's great. That was very good. Much better to find it during a truck check than some, some other more important times.
And remarkably, the batteries were nine years old. For last that long, I was actually pretty shocked.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something you should put on your, uh, vehicle maintenance. Uh, for checks.
Yeah. I'm sure they do. Through the rescue trucks report from last year to see if they, uh, checked the batteries. But I'm sure we, we, I hooked them up, I didn't even hook them up to a tester and they tested that they were fine, but being nine years old.
They don't owe you anything.
Yeah. They're just well.
So. Nice fix. Thank you for, uh, taking the initiative rather than having someone else do it.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's.
Awesome. Anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Move, we accept Chief Evanuska's report as given.
Second.
All favor.
Aye, aye.
Chief McAllister.
The folder we just handed out now. It involves this particular document right here. Is, uh, our responses. And it's a year to date. This one was printed out this afternoon. It's, it's accurate within five fire calls. There. I noticed today that there were five reports that are unfinished, that were not submitted. And they're all in the last couple of weeks and all those reports that were not submitted involve a lot of detail. So. If you go, uh, let's see, Bethel and Stony Hill total department incidents, right in the beginning there. With the exception of five. Uh, year to date, we've done three hundred forty-nine fire calls.
What page are you on? I have huge numbers on my page, like twenty-five thousand.
This one right here.
Oh, we're on this, this was, this was first.
Oh, no, no, no. We're saving the best for last.
So we read the folder from back to front?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is how it prints out with that new software when I go down that street. But. We've done, it says here approximately three hundred forty-nine calls. We've done about three hundred fifty-five calls this year. I can give you the monthly readouts like this if you'd like. But, um, if you read from, um. Left to right. Over to the, uh, third column from the right says Bethel only, we've done two hundred twenty-eight calls. Minus those five. Well, actually minus three, the other two were all due at the Stony Hill. So, uh, and then the hundred seventy-eight is the remaining calls in the community, which would be Stony Hill. So what we listed here is the total number of calls that each member has responded to. Percentages as well as actual responses. Within our district and within the town as a whole. So you'll see as you go down the list, you know. Who goes to how many calls, what percentages that that represents, et cetera.
This McAllister William guy is killing it. This McAllister William guy is killing it.
Yeah, don't hold your breath at that one, I'm telling you. I, I made a, I made a passing statement to a member. About six months ago. And I was joking, I said, I, I wanted to join the thousand club. He said, what's that? Well, I wanted to make a thousand calls in four years. I was kidding around. And. He said, how can I do that? I said, we have to, you know, show a thousand calls in four years. So the guy is well on his way to doing that now. He's like, hell, Ben, I'm doing it. And it was a joke.
You should have like a challenge coin or a pin or something for that, right?
But, um. So you can see that if you go through the numerous pages here, and the other thing is, uh, we should not brought this particular. Uh, handout tonight. Is just going to support what we talked a little bit later on the tax abating, this paper ball, whatever else. Just to give you a rough idea of how many. Just to give you a rough idea of how many calls everybody's going to. You know, um, and Chief Galliford's here now, he'll tell you, we've been getting hammered for the last six weeks, eight weeks. You know. Fires, near misses, extrications, bad seal call, everything. I mean, it, it's. It's just constant. And, um, I don't think that's gonna change. I think the, the nature of the community and the people who moved in and the incredible amount of construction, the proposed construction. Um, are all having a effect on here. And the last thing I wanted to make reference to is, I am again crazy about numbers. Compared to last year. Downtown Bethel, if we continue at this rate of fire calls. We will do about a hundred thirty-five more calls this year than we did last year. So that will bring us from five twenty-six, six twenty-six. Now, uh, so about six hundred sixty calls. If we add in Stony Hill's calls, which legitimately. Um, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna hit a thousand fire calls. And, and what I always say, I make the comparison, it's like being in Long Island now. You know, where they're doing thousands of calls, firing EMS. This past year between firing EMS, we did about four thousand calls, which averages a call every other hour. And we do it with the exception of EMS staffings during the day, we do it all voluntarily.
Are you seeing the flow of interest that they're seeing in Stony Hill? The flow of new members in, interested in.
Yeah, well, we're doing pretty good. We have, uh, a meeting tomorrow night. I think that there's, uh, half dozen new applicants.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. So, I hope that this, this is a little bit more detailed, but. Our new software allows us to do this and we're taking advantage of it. But if you want the last month, I have that. I don't have it with me tonight, but I can get it. And it just shows the progression of the number of calls. All the rest of the stuff. Um, you're kind of gonna see that later in the presentation on the apparatus costs today, because we're at the end of the budget here. And obviously, if you saw the, one of the biggest, you know, just under forty thousand for those pieces here. So actually came around, it was right around forty-three thousand with the, with the bolts in it.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Next up in the folder?
Want me to go first? Okay, a couple months back, our Mr. Chairman, you specifically asked me to do a. A record search on the cost or the care and maintenance of the fire apparatus in the Bethel Fire Station. So along with, thank God, Mrs. Clark and a few of the other administrative members. Um, we pulled out all the files from the last four years, all the files we had access to, which was pretty much everything. So I would refer you to this particular sheet right here. You have a white copy.
Yes, that's what we started with, what we were confused about.
So what we did is, um, I'm gonna be honest with you, if you look at the top where it says utility, you'll see that there's no figures in there. I had none. Um, and unfortunately, it appears that that utility really, uh, there was no expense on that in terms of care and maintenance. This year there was. Okay. So, we go back twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. And going from left to right, we started with squad five, engine six, tanker one, rescue one, tower one. At the bottom, you can see, um, for those four years, um, what the costs were. Uh, going all the way down. At the bottom, I, I did the percentages, the percentage increase over the years. For the cost of the care and maintenance of the apparatus. Now, as you can see, some years it was more than others. From twenty twenty-one to, to twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year, to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. You can see that there was a twenty-two point seven percent increase in the, uh. Uh, like the, uh, apparatus care. Um, it, it looks like a big figure, twenty-two point seven, but as you see, there was a little over eight thousand dollars. Still significant. From twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, we weren't from thirty-three. Uh, to thirty-five, nine, about twenty-five hundred dollars more, a seven point four four percent increase in cost. And then from, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, um, significant, again, thirteen point six. About, uh, a little under six thousand dollars in additional costs. Now, to document all that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have every single. Invoice and quote and repair order in individual files with me tonight. So for the last four or five years here. Thank Mrs. Clark and a few of our other members who literally tore every file apart in the firehouse up here, we put that together. So we have accurate records contained within everything we have and the actual costs and the percentage increases. Now, could this possibly be off a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's directional.
I'm gonna tell you right where it is this year, and I'll jump to this folder, which I did not give you a copy of because I didn't have the file. And that was the care and maintenance of car one.
See, and that's, and that's, that's the one that sort of raised the flag, right? We know the, we know the trucks are going out for their annual inspections and everything, but then. To get like that laundry list of things that were wrong with that was kind of like. Are there other holes?
Mr. Chairman, hit me as hard as it, I, I, I never saw it recover. I didn't. So I can tell you right now that I did break it down. Thank you again to Mrs. Clark for her very good record keeping.
You gotta be sick of the files.
Thirty-five hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh.
And that now, that was also serviced at highway.
Correct.
Labor at highway.
That is correct. The, the biggest things that, uh, the cost was all new tires. Uh, the parts turned out to be fifty percent less than that generalized quote that I gave you. Because the, uh, the head mechanic thought that the suspension in the rear of that chief's car was a, uh. Was a higher quality than it was. He thought it was all electronic and it was all nomadic, it was air. So that cut the price in half of those parts. It, it involved foreign tires, brakes all the way around. Uh, obviously, their labor was weighed by the town, God bless it. Uh, there was also additional work that was done on the car that we, was donated. And I, I have to give him a shout out here, Smitty's Auto Body. And, and he said something, I didn't go ask him, he came to me. And so the right rear fender was not attached, he attached it. The driver's seat was. Pretty broken and he fixed it. Um, and then we looked at trying to see if we could clean the car a little bit. It's ten and a half years old. And I said, what can we do to make this, you know, belong to paint? Make everything last a lot longer, because we, we gave up the, the new chief's car to get the latter power put in there. And, um. When it came time to go down there and he took everything off, he said, this is what I suggest, this will not do where to. Unless you take it off, we took off all the stickers with the exception of the big one on the side and the ones on the back, which are required by law. And, uh, I said, okay, can you give me the bill? He said, I'm not gonna give you the bill. He said, I am so happy to look at that car game out. I, I'm proud to say or tell everybody I did that and I'm, I'm glad he did. So, that's kind of where it was, but we still paid thirty-five hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents for that.
Hopefully we have a new, new fresh start. Yep. But I mean, that's, that's part of the records, you know, are we keeping up on things?
Yes, and there's a, there's a full file on it now.
How many miles are on it?
Fifty-four thousand, not a lot.
Had it been your, and I just questioned both, both chiefs, has it been that, that the. Uh, have you been using highway all along for stock or not so much?
No, but I have no problem using them. They did a great job.
Yeah.
They're, they're both firemen, Eddie and, and Eddie Hook and Ricky Stugler.
We, we took everything, the Vuard and Ellie, or. Yeah, I haven't asked. I'm down for anything. Hey, and the last time I really did bring, I got the answer from Ricky is that they don't really have time. They, they, they will have time for like an oil change or whatever, but honestly, when I changed oil in the pickup truck. I literally did that Stony Hill myself.
Yeah.
It was easy enough for me to do that myself. You know, it's, you know, it's not a big truck or anything like that, but I was there hanging out for the day, we just. No.
It's, it's gonna save us, it's, it saved me almost two thousand dollars.
Yep, that's pretty significant.
We're gonna, it's not just gonna be the car I have now, it's gonna be the one that we use for the fireplace. And the one my friend uses still, and, uh, they'll also go down there for servicing. It's gonna save us a lot, save.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a liability aspect to it too, right? That, you know, something happens, there's an accident, brakes fail, something, it's like, and we'll see your records and we got nothing.
Our fireplace card goes out a lot, but not only for fireplace calls, but, uh, my training. Uh, staff uses that when they go out to go to classes, travel places. Works out good. We're gonna have to pay them, expense reimbursement, we're gonna have to pay them mileage, they just take that car and go, and it's a bargain.
Terrific.
So if anybody wants to look at the files.
You're not gonna read them into the record?
I'd love to.
But I think that the beauty of it, right, is now it's all clean, so hopefully it's a nice clean start and things will continue to be, uh. Orderly.
And this is the file for utility one, but unfortunately, as I said, that goes back to August of twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
And that's the only record I could find. They're all here for your, for ruse, if you'd like.
Terrific. I wanna see the car. Car outside? Oh, maybe after me, I wanna see the, I wanna see the, the Smitty's right here. Great.
Do you want to have the stoney horns?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't need to take them, I mean, what do you, which ones do you have? Those are copies, alright.
Ground leathers, nozzles, hose testing and all the apparatus for dispatch. So I.
Let's take them, we'll, we'll put them into the, the Google Drive is gonna fill up quick, right?
I can probably email this to you also.
Okay. Terrific. Very nice.
And we did lose some of the hose in there and it's all documented in there and the hose that we did lose. We had stuff from years ago and said that, if we can be honest with you, I got sick of looking at them, we did it all.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
But that's it, it's no good, there's no sense in it.
That's right. Okay. Bill, more?
I think the next thing that, uh, we have would be the tax abatement on the agenda there.
It is on the agenda, so anything else that would be, you consider part of your chief's report?
I think I should turn it, I'm pretty good.
Alright, then make a motion, we accept Chief McAllister's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Alright, moving on to unfinished and ongoing business, review of the previous month's expenditures. Um, I personally had nothing, nothing jumped out at me, like I said earlier, I had semi. Start to organize this a little bit more so you can see what we're spending in different suppliers. Um. And, uh, I, I still gotta play with this a little bit more so it shows up a little more. Easy to read. Right now, it's every expense and then it's all on, just the total equals, but. As I said, as you'd expect, it's gallons a night and AAA are the biggest at almost eighty thousand dollars each. Any other discussion on expenditures? Alright. Uh, purchasing department, we covered, universal gear spec, we. Touched on that again, uh, once we review this stuff, maybe that'll be a little more. Uh, clear, vehicle records we talked about, so that leaves us tax abatement. And we have certainly very interested parties, who, who would like to start off?
Um. Uh, I'm gonna, Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm gonna defer to Mrs. Clark. She's chaired that committee for, for many years and, um. You know, what we did is we used, uh, the Stony Hill report there to, uh, as an outline for presentations she'll make tonight. And the. The one with the written cover like this, I think we'll do that, she'll give you a little historical perspective. And then, I'm sure, uh, Chief Galper, Chief Evans are gonna get into it. And then I, we'd really like to talk about these percentages and proposals and stuff. We have a lot to say, so.
Okay, so one thing that isn't, uh, or one thing that exists is we had a, uh, we pushed a proposal to the select. So there is something under consideration at the selectman level. Um, so if we're gonna revise that, that may change what's going on.
I think we're gonna support.
Okay, well, I mean, that was the whole, we voted on pushing it there because we supported it, so.
We, we didn't take it up with this.
Right, so it's next Tuesday.
Well, I, I think what we're gonna do here tonight is we're gonna give you an in-depth background of, you know, where this has come from and. Hopefully where, where it's gonna go.
Yeah, and my plan would be to, I, I will go to this, the selectman's meeting next Tuesday. Will you each have a representative or yourselves to be there to speak to the, the details? Because I think you'd probably do a much better details, job with the details than I would. You know, you can directly answer all the questions.
Yeah, I think the way Tommy spelled it out is, is.
We're referring to that as the Galliford paper right now.
So if I can just speak on that, just clarify, right? So, right, so the fire commission kind of proposed something to the board of selectmen, and I, I don't think the issues will be here with the commission here, but. With the board of selectmen, I think they either have to follow the state statute that said you can have a tax abatement for people that pay property taxes, right? You know, they can be eligible, that will leave a lot of people out. Or you just do a incentive program. Where I, I, I assume under state statutes or whatever, we can just, they can create a whole new ordinance. That's an incentive that, than anybody that makes that call presented, wherever the requirements are, they'll be eligible for. So it would open up for more people, I think that's kind of the, what we would like to do, make it for, you know, we got younger guys that have no tax liability, but, you know. They'll make a lot of calls, they spend a lot of time, they should be rewarded or something.
Yeah.
But also for people that live out of town, we have several members from Danbury, New Town, right? That make a lot of calls, are very active, both of our chiefs live out of town. So under the current program or current tax abatement, you know, we have to work something out with those towns. Whereas we just did an incentive program. It would be included, just not based on where they live. I think that's kind of the stuff they gotta work out on the, on the board of selectmen side of how they wanna do it. So that was kind of where I was going with that. You know, like we got our checks this time and I, I don't think they even took taxes out, so sometimes they do something and they don't, so. You know, to, federal tax. But anyway, so that, that was kind of what I wanted to show on that, that, you know, there's a state law, you know, I, I don't, I'm not a. Fire, so I don't know the legalese of how to follow that to that nth degree. You know, and it also talks about retired members. In the, in the tax abatement statute, that you're retired, that you just have twenty-five years of service, that again, that will open up a bigger. Group of can, of members that are, would be eligible that have just had twenty-five years and live in town.
Right. So I think that was in our proposal.
That is in the.
Twenty-five perpetuity.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're in, they're covered.
But I also think, you know, going into the discussion with the selectmen, they can, they can choose and modify, and I mean, we, we referred it for discussion and. Yeah, they can, they can.
The abatement, I remember when Westport did it. People that in town got an abatement, meaning they were taxed less on their property. So, they didn't get a direct cash payment, their tax was less. Whereas where I lived out of town, I got a check for the thousand dollars, followed with a ten ninety-nine.
Right.
Because now they're giving me a check, that's income.
So there is a legislative report and a, and a kind of a ruling on the state that. They used to do it that way and they changed it because the IRS considers us employees. We're not, um, contracted employees, we're just regular employees of the town who provide a service. So the state and the IRS says that you have to. Basically pay them and take federal taxes out. So we used, we used to get about, like I got a thousand dollars off my property tax. It was nice if I'm working without a hundred bucks on the, the wash, but then.
But if they tax you less, then I give you anything, they're just taxing you less.
Yeah.
Right. Therein lies one of the problems. Yeah. Right, you know, you want this plan to be uniform and easy to administer. Right, yes. That was one of my problems with the way, uh, Bethel had always done it with the graduations, it like, I was just. take it all, give it to them as much as you can to everybody, right? Not the X number of years and two hundred dollars and that doesn't incentivize anybody to do anything.
Yeah, that's all we had. Yeah, and we also had it, you know, it wasn't just calls, you had to make meetings and drills and things like that, and if you got a certification, it gave you points. Basically, you made all the calls, you were making the drills because you were active, so you came that, you know.
Yep.
So kind of, I think the purpose of it is to get people to come up with calls.
Yes, and stay, join and stay. And no one's gonna do that for three years for zero dollars.
Yeah.
For the next five years for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Anyway, so that, so I just, you know, wrote down a lot of bugs to just clarify it or make it more complicated a little bit.
No, I think it's valuable. I think it would be appropriate to support what Chief Galper just said. With just some really basic specs that we put together here. And that's basically what's covered on that front page there, but I think, Gail, if you could read those and then answer the questions here. It's gonna give us, we're gonna be halfway between what Tom just said about, you know, the young guys, we gotta take care of them, hang around the firehouse, they're going on a million calls versus people that are around for a long time, they qualify for it, but there are a lot of people that don't live in town and she's gonna cover that right now, so.
So I just wanna reiterate, we have a very vigorous recruitment program going on. You look around, ask other towns, people are leading volunteers in the left and right. We just keep increasing people, it's nothing for us to interview seven, eight people a month. And so we're doing our part for recruitment. We need this to retain them, we wanna keep them. So, and I just, just so you get an idea, I look back at the last three years, people that have actually collected the abatement. We had twenty-six qualified members this year. Six of them, here we go with the new people, they just now are getting two hundred and fifty dollars. They've been there two years, some of them almost three years because of the July first. We have fifteen firefighters made a hundred plus calls. Twelve EMS people made a hundred plus calls. And seventeen of our members are from out of town. Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen were ten years plus. We had three people that were in the middle of two to ten, and again, six people that were collecting for two to five years. We have eight out of town members who qualified, but they weren't eligible because they're out of town. Some of these are longtime people, been here ten years or more. Under the proposed FC, I'm sorry, what does that stand for?
Fire Commission.
Fire Commission, oh, thank you. For five percent of combined fire EMS calls, here are the numbers. We had seventeen hundred thirty-five EMS calls, five percent of that is eighty-seven. Five hundred and twenty-six fire calls, five percent of that is twenty-six. And we had a hundred and thirteen calls is what you would need to qualify using that five percent rule. Rather than our standard now is a hundred calls. I did notice on these proposals, there was nothing about fire police. Right now, the existing program we have, fire police have to make fifty calls a year to qualify. And also to, I'm not sure, I think for you guys do it too, if you have a couple, a married couple, the ceiling is fifteen hundred, if they're both over ten years. Okay, so. That's, I had a couple of, I'm sorry, give me a second here, married people, fire police. Okay, so I am a little bit confused here about how the expectation is to pay us here, because as you said, we've been down the whole road. First, we were getting, they would take the thousand dollars right off the top of your taxes. Then they said the government wanted withholding. So then we got checks for a thousand dollars minus the tax. Then now we're getting checks and it's, they're not taking tax out and it's up to us to declare it on our tax. So I'm not sure from reading this here, how this is gonna work, is it, will they, they're gonna take it off our taxes?
I don't know that we've determined that yet.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the discussion process.
Well.
Yeah, because we have out of town people and all that, so.
Yep.
Well, because the other thing is the new people, a lot of these young kids, they don't even own their cars.
Right, that's, we understand that.
Right, right.
That was awful.
Do you have any other questions?
And then also for the, for, in terms of calls, we also counted, there were staffing hour equivalents for calls as well. So you got staffing hours counted towards calls, not just straight up calls. I'd have to go back and look for it, but yeah.
I have a question, when you did staffing hours for calls, did you equate a certain number of calls, a certain number of hours equaling one call? And you remember what that was? Was it four to one?
I think it was four to one.
Or is it?
I think it was four.
I think it was four to one.
Yeah, for staffing hours will be.
Four to one, okay, so that's really important on the EMS side.
Right, so the question remains, and I think part of the discussion next week for the selectman, I mean, obviously, knowing these numbers tells us what the impact of the town is, right? However you look at it, it's an impact, whether it's taxes not collected or discounted or money out of pocket, you know, it's all, it's all an impact to the town and then it's how we administer that and how we equitably reward the people who are living out of town, the people who don't have tax liability, how we make this a universal program.
Yep.
So I think that the gist of what we proposed and pushed forward in the selectman was, we want the maximum benefit. Here's the number, here's what it looks like and how do we make this happen and administer it? I think that's really where we get to next week. You know, it's been on, we brought it up at not an unfortunate time, but it was budget season when we first brought it up, right? And there was plenty of other stuff going on at budget season and now we're in the, now we're in the situation where we can look at it.
Thank you.
Chairman, do they have, I get the number, I know it used to be some years like twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand what the payout was this year for the tentative, but I don't know what it was.
It's, you're in the same ballpark.
For many departments?
Well, each, each one, yeah.
Oh, it used to be like twenty-five.
Yeah, no, it's, it looks here, Tom, like it's right around twenty-five for each fire company. Just looking at what you did and what we did.
What they're currently.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm doing this. No, I know. I didn't know what your number was.
I was saying.
But without reading all this, do you know, Gail, do you happen to know what the current payout was?
I do not, I usually get that paperwork from Mr. Sarver after the checks go out. They'll give it to me to prepare for next year.
We can, we can figure it out.
Well, if we can get it from the controller's office. I was just curious that, we're already paying something, so the, we're not asking for fifty thousand dollars, we're asking for twenty-five more. Possibly.
Yeah, I think we're buying, I should be plus seven hundred thousand with everything. Just what I saw. That's, that's the tax abatement side. If they did something, they're gonna set up a paper call.
Yeah, we looked at that, it's the same money, it's just, it's coming out of. But if they do a tax abatement, there's still deductive from the general fund.
Correct, yeah. And that was, Mr. Selectman, that was one of the reasons why I gave you that list of response, you know, with the calls. By the way, it's that I didn't have it, I have it, I do have it the last couple of months with me, if anybody wants to office. That would help you determine how much would be paid out if they've met that one hundred call, one hundred hour threshold. And let's say we're paid it and that was a call, that could easily be determined by the paperwork I gave you tonight.
All right, so we have representation for next Tuesday, right? I assume when we show up, we'll be there, we'll be shuffled to the front, as long as there's more of us than everybody else.
We're gonna bring in National Guard.
So it's good that this topic is finally gonna come into, come into a bigger discussion, bigger audience. It's good news.
I, just a quick question without reading it all also. Is it prorated to, if someone doesn't meet all the calls, you know, the hundred and thirteen calls, what if they made eighty calls? Do they get eighty percent, they have to make the minimal amount of calls to be qualified?
Yeah, and there's another part.
And I think we're doing that to make people come to the calls, correct?
Yeah, and actually, there's a pretty serious part of that, I think you should explain about the people who are incomplete a full year.
Yeah. There is, the problem is there are some people who will, once they reach that hundred and thirteen, if they know that's the magic number, they don't see so much of them.
Really?
And there's no incentive for them to.
No, my point was if they started in the middle of the year.
Oh.
They would have to wait till one full year before they qualify.
They can't get all that.
They could lose ten, eleven months because they didn't do a full year. You know, and that's, that's hard to swallow, so. Right?
That happens all across the service.
It does, it does.
Good in your career department and you wanna take a promotional exam? Ah, I need thirty more days before the test.
Been there.
Sorry. Wait two more years. All right, any further discussion on the abatement?
I'll just make a comment, this is long overdue. What'd you say? I think, and you said it, I'll just make a comment that I believe it's long overdue to support the local volunteer fire department.
I agree.
You know, if the town had to do a paid department, it would certainly cost a lot more money, millions and millions.
I would encourage both departments, many people identifiable at that meeting next week. Let's change the team.
It's a good idea.
All right, moving on.
Yeah, I'll just make another comment, I don't think there's a problem with the board of selectmen. I think when it comes to the board of finances, there's more pushback.
I think it starts with the board of selectmen.
Yeah, right.
Usually the bankers that are the boss. All right, no more unfinished or ongoing business to discuss? Any new business?
Oh, I have one thing to read this.
Yes.
I'm working with Tom, we had a call at Dursall the other day and we went to use our high band repeater channel on one of our trucks. And for some reason, it's not in our radio anymore, so I currently getting prices, I'm getting all of our mobile radios reprogrammed at the firehouse. More to follow with how much that's gonna cost.
So it's not a hardware thing, it's just a software thing.
It's just a software, it's gonna be a plug in.
How do you get it up?
I, we don't know, we have no idea. We went to turn it on the other day at Dursall, which when they're working, you could actually, you know, hear what's going on without it. It makes life miserable.
It was only in one engine, because only one engine had a repeater, I think they might have cloned one of the other mobiles that didn't have it. But they were doing some repairs at some point over the years and reprogrammed it, got it figured out.
Well, I called Marty's to get a call on getting them to come and, you know, obviously get a score and reprogram them. But I also had that Goose Tom who just installed the radio on my truck yesterday to give us price on it and I'll meet the guy tomorrow morning at ten thirty there and he's gonna go through all, you know, get an inventory of what radios we have and, you know, he's gotta break, basically break a new program going to the radios. But it's, it's a work in progress, but we need the time to have it.
You need it, yeah.
You need it. So I don't know if that's gonna come out there in capital. As Tommy said, it's not gonna be a lot, it's probably even far as my radio's about to hit.
I agree. Any other new business?
I have a comment.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Thanks, everyone.